An emollient violation is when you pay a public officer to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. One is Article One, Section Ten, where it says, "No state law will create, no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts." Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under contract. A contract to perform that is based upon the oath or affirmation that they took. The contract perimeters are defined within the Constitution of the United States. And when the states enact laws that direct their agents to disobey the law, the Constitution of the United States, that would be a violation of Article One, Section Ten. Now, the Fourteenth Amendment is the other place where you'll find the reinforcement of this issue. And that is where it says, "No state shall create or or enforce any law that shall impair the privileges or immunities of United States citizens." The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are, at minimum, those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments. They cannot be impaired. And thus, the state of North Dakota has enacted laws in its inferior constitution that is committing public officials and law enforcement, who would be paid, to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there isn't, in our amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of North Dakota illegally and unconstitutionally. Conoco Downing is litigating this issue in the United States Supreme Court, and I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, there can be criminal sanctions that will come from that. And we don't want to go down that path, but officials must be made aware of paying people to disobey the law that is an emollient violation, that is illegal, and it is unconstitutional. I'm asking you honorable individuals to please look at Clause One, Amendment Five, confirm what I'm saying is true, and then direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner, consistent with the obligations that are qualified in the Constitution of the United States. And I have a notice that I would like to put on the record. Thank you, and God bless. This is the notice for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, well, there's one other issue. I also sent you guys an affidavit in May, on the twentieth. That has not been answered yet. And you were sent notice on June second. And that hasn't been answered yet. So... Seeing as nothing's been done, I'm also putting them on file for you. Now, first...
Okay, what's your next one? Who does this?
Uh, let's, you want to do the budget, or you want to do that?
We're perfect.
What's the number?
Let's either step through...
Okay. Uh, ditch cutting, we just, we need a date there. I think October fifteenth, or not?
That's what it's been, it's been three years.
Yeah, October fifteenth.
Yeah, we can get out, what if we get a storm on the fall?
Well, but...
I think most people are usually...
Exactly, most people do it before...
Yeah, the fifteenth.
Somebody want to make that?
I'll make a motion, we, uh, ditch cutting, October fifteenth deadline.
Motion made by Stan, is there a second on that? Second, I believe, and any discussion now, or I think that's adequate, for sure. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Always motion carried.
Tammy?
Come on, you guys.
Good morning.
So, I, you know, do ours, um, for the floodplain, so we have to do ordinance D now because well, it's been mapped by FEMA, so we have the new maps, and they go into effect November fourteenth. So we have to go from a model B as in boy to model V as in dog. Can I email that out to you? So I just need a motion, we have to go to model...
What was the date on that, November fourteenth?
Yes.
So we need a motion to move...
Model B.
Model B.
Yes.
Motion by Brian Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stan, discussion, not an A or B, but a D.
With D, we've got twenty-six letters in the alphabet.
Any other discussion? You want to explain anything further, or?
Want to see questions, I, you know, what else you?
All right.
So this will also go up to the zoning, because, um, man, it says zoning. He also, John will bring, John's gonna, John will bring up the zoning meeting tonight, too.
Okay.
And then it'll be recorded in the area's office, in the court's office.
Sounds good, thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those? Motion carried.
Rent muscle, I'll catch you later. President LeBouin, that project's going, so it's, yeah, sixteen trucks going today.
So what'd you do to, how, how did you go about funding this now?
So, the city president has to fund four million dollars, so they've added some, you know, fees onto the water bills, um, you know, the blue and fee. They're also waiting to change their ordinance, they'll also be charging like ten dollars for empty lock in town because they have access to water and sewer. So, so thirty, you know, hoping in the next, you know, couple of years, maybe they'll be funding that you can still apply for. And hopefully the legislators, um, at this last legislative session, when Department of Environmental Quality came in and said, you know, we always fund clean water projects, we never do wastewater, and they had a list of three hundred wastewater projects. There's only three hundred and thirty-seven communities in North Dakota, so that shows the need. So, you know, they fund other projects, maybe I can go back and say, you funded that one fifty percent, you own the others thirty percent, maybe you'll...
No, let's cry, right?
You know, we can always beg. So that was with the brick grant, that that funding that pulled, and then the Harvey generator for the hospital was pulled, um, and ninety-eight percent there that we had that funding back.
Oh, really?
Came back through a different program, I never say a hundred percent because I thought that was the brick grants, and they made the funding for me. So, but I've been signing paperwork, so it was nice to go give them good news.
Good news.
And it's, it's gonna be actually a better deal for Harvey. The other grant was a seventy-five, twenty-five. This one would be seventy-five percent federal, ten percent state, and the hospital will have to come up with fifteen percent. And that'll be easy, just have to sell the old one and... So, maybe something for a big channel. Do I have any questions for you?
Any, uh...
Thank you.
Any water board stuffs?
They're gonna meet a week from today.
So we do say...
If you can ask for any questions you want, right now, I'll be on. Texas, uh, today, looking for one or two, if you want to make a full on commission. You're gonna need to make a statement, whether we have to do it technologically, I don't think. So, maybe you just want us to be a...
What are you deciding?
So, so I have a waterways in the county, a pool of cattails, and a home in the line. You know, and it's not in our S S district.
Oh, this is over and above your S S drain?
Right. But, you know, we get people that call and say, you know, there's so many cattails in these waterways, you know, the river, James River, things like that. What do we do with them?
They want to make it like, the way Larry explained it to me, like S S drains, and the people will come and pay so much to get these, some people said they would pay, some people don't want to pay. So how do you figure that out?
That's next Tuesday, huh?
Yeah, next Tuesday, seven in...
I, I don't know, but I think it'll be, it'll be soon. But I, I think, I think it'd be a great deal, I think we should get behind that.
So is it the township, is it, is it something that townships are gonna want to do or not want to do, I mean?
Well, it's, it's landowners, you know, for example...
It's the landowners of these waterways.
Right, aren't...
A good example, probably...
It's like that Al Sardar complaint that we had.
Right, right, but, but what I'm saying is, 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 I'm not against this, but what I'm getting at is, where does the line go from the township to the county, because the township should have, say...
Township, township.
And to do landowners, when you buy a piece of property that has, you know, a waterway going through it, is it your responsibility, maybe?
Well, and I'm not gonna do it on my land, if you don't do yours, then it won't help.
I understand, I'm just making sure that we're not stepping on township deals.
You know, private land, right? It's all private land, so you'd have to get permission to do that from the private landlord.
Right, and, you know, and you made a very good point, if you take care of yours, but the next guy doesn't, it's pointless.
And that's why a water board or some other entity would have to come in and collectively do it.
Who's gonna, they would intern out there?
Water board.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
So this is that, you know, you look at James River, and you know, if it backs up...
Oh, it's awful.
It's awful, then it backs up water, and it's looking based for that, you know, it's funded to the Corps of Engineers, because they don't own the water.
So, in order for us to make a decision that day, we have to have a meeting?
I don't think you have to make a decision.
We will have to hold a special meeting, and all I'm saying is, I don't think they want to wait till your meeting in September to get some kind of decision, so we go.
Because they're gonna spray them, you need to do that pretty soon, right?
Well, of course, we either spray them in September, or they'll just wait for, or do it next year.
How are we gonna pick the water, get everything lined up?
So, and Patrick Doan is coming to the meeting to tell us how much, you know, for model.
Who?
Patrick Doan, um, yeah.
For the, with the girl?
Yeah, Patrick Doan.
It works, I had, they did mine last year.
Did you?
Yes, it works.
Did they come back, well, did they, they come back this year?
Nope.
Oh, no, you kill cattails, they're...
They're laying dead in the bottom of the ditch right now.
They'll be there for five years.
Well, that's a good thing, because there's a lot of roads, there's a lot of township roads where they can't reach out.
Oh, yeah.
It's the snows, but... There's lots of them in every township.
I mean, there's a mile there.
The one sarcastically said...
And we're not buying the drone.
We're not buying a drone, no.
Sarcastically said once, the state should make cattails a noxious weed because it's almost become that.
Yeah, because they're thick all over.
And it's based everywhere.
Because it'll be cost here.
You guys, could we get proactive on this and make a decision with our group today?
We should probably hear it.
Depends on the cost. Or how many you want to do.
Yeah, there, there's...
There's devils in the details here.
You know, and maybe we have to sit down together and have a priority list.
I want to do it.
Or one, yeah. Is there a couple guys, a couple of you able to go to that Tuesday?
Probably can, say Tuesday.
Yeah, I think Tuesday.
It's at seven in the morning, right?
Western, yup, western part of the county, they'll only rain twice this year, so...
So, you know, you probably better post in the case more than two, let's go.
Well, I don't need to know if two other people go, in all reality, two people are enough.
Well, I'd be right here, right?
I want to know if it's gonna be more than two.
Well, I like, you know that.
That's, that...
We need to communicate before that day.
Right. Well, let's decide now who's gonna go, you two guys, send your interest, right? Okay, let's, let's, Stan and, Stan and Brian, or one of you can't go, call somebody else.
Okay, well, we're limited to two, as far as...
Now, we need to limit it to two, we don't need...
Danny, you don't need a...
So it's Stan and Brian, unless one can't go, call somebody else.
Okay.
Don't want to get cost in any, come up with priorities, ops, something.
Next Tuesday morning at seven.
Right, some, some details as to...
Or the worst preparedness that are with...
I'll talk to Dan, or please get...
That's awful early for you, that's seven a.m.
Well, I'm up, don't you worry.
There's no copy and cooking, so...
Don't you worry.
Do, do you have to get permission from the private landowners, or is it, is it township right away?
You know, I, I think if, you know, some landlords come to us and say, hey, we need this area sprayed, I mean, I think we have to work with them, but...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming we're gonna have to do all of that.
That's what they get...
I'm assuming this came from Monty Falls area down there, the land...
I think that's start, I think that's what started it, plus the James River, we've had a lot of...
Well, that is a tribute to the James, that is, that is the James.
But here by Fondrick's and all that, that's always...
Whether, you know, somebody's gonna say, well, you know, because the people, it's the same thing happens with trees. Well, it's in the township right away, then township's gotta take care of the trees. When the guys that are gonna say, you know, we want to come spray your cattails, well, I'm not spraying for the ones in the, in the township right away, I mean, those kind of questions are gonna come up.
But the weed board would, would spray the system, and they, they'd pay for it.
Right.
But the landowners would still have, you'd have to get permission from all...
Right, I'm just saying, there's, there's a few things you gotta, as long as you get that taken care of, I think it's another thing.
Pretty sure they've thought about it.
You don't know how hard it is with the out-of-state landowners, they don't care. They don't care what happens.
Just like, uh, ditch is, uh, out-of-state landowners have...
No, they don't have, they don't have state law, I've heard, have...
That's true. Okay, have you got any else, anybody got a question for? Okay.
Thanks.
All righty. The recorder's off this resolution, right?
Yep.
Got that, are you ready yet?
That's waiting here, Stan, by the way.
That's, first question will be simply yes or no, do you wish to be voted with us?
We've talked about it a long enough, yeah.
And if you note in there, obviously, this is something that needs to be done now, even though we're not talking about anything until first of January twenty-twenty-seven, but this position is due to be on the ballot in June and November, which is why we drew this this fall. And as a result of this, appear ready, willing, and able to move forward. We'll have a public hearing Thursday, the fourth of September, in conjunction with your permission.
So I guess what we need is a motion to approve this request, resolution.
I'll make this, I'll make a motion that we change the designation of the reporter from an elected position to appointed role.
Motion by Stan, second by who, discussion on it? Any discussion? Jerry, you got any comments on this?
I will be retiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. I stand with the term, so, um, I guess what you guys still desire?
This is why we, we've talked about before, so that we, uh, develop...
Yup, and I don't have a problem with that and stuff. So, I mean, I'm not gonna be there, so...
Well, you understand the reasoning.
Oh, I, you know, I absolutely do, yeah. I mean, it's just up to the people if they're gonna come in, is there the hearing whether it'll go forward again? Um, because people have asked me about it, because they didn't realize it was becoming a point. And I said, well, they, I didn't have hearings on it, but, uh, I said, nobody really attended.
What about hearing?
Well, you discussed it, but wasn't...
Really haven't any...
Without a hearing, you wouldn't show up.
You have one, you talked about, it's very difficult to come...
Yeah.
Yeah. People didn't know, like, that's the only thing.
The reason why behind this is gives us the ability to get qualified.
You're, you're in the know in the state, how many are appointed and how many are elected?
There's not that many appointed. Um, Redville County, yeah, Redville County has been looking at it, and, um, of them, I believe, the bigger counties like Cass County...
Bigger ones would...
Stark County, but not, there are very many little counties.
But, but most of that is because of history and tradition.
Oh, I know.
Not because of what is becoming the reality.
Well, I know in Cavalier County, they had the hearing, and they had so many people show up, they decided not to do it.
Really?
Yeah.
But obviously, they have enough people that are willing to run for these things.
Well, that recorder's been in office since nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe not sometimes, there are people that like to vote on stuff.
Oh, absolutely, and I, I don't know...
Whether that's a good thing or not.
But, uh, in their smaller rural communities...
Their choices are limited.
But, yeah, as of December thirty-first next year, at the end of the term, I would be done. So, I appreciate it, I love my job. Um, actually, the county recorders asked if I would still help with legislation after I retire. So...
And we thank you for your diligence of finding stuff. I know one thing, it's very nice to call you and ask questions, we like to get information, good information.
Well, and what's really nice is we're back indexed back to nineteen forty-five with the D's. We've only got fifty D books out of a hundred and one left up back indexed. More of each book's quite a bit more, miss the lane, is I think we only got, I want to say twenty-five of those books left for back indexed. So we worked on that, we're gonna have, there's always something to do in the office. But, I appreciate, I appreciate my job.
And where is Tom DePert?
So in the next year, this is a question I have, is Lexi gonna go to some of this stuff in Bismarck, or you're gonna go, or her?
I still have to go, because at, in our bylaws for the County Recorders Association, the county recorder is the only one that can vote. So there will be some...
Will she be going with you to some of that?
Yes, but, and I know I can...
I mean, if she's gonna apply for this job, when you're not...
Right, and, but I did talk to Dan also, that you did cut the budget for me, um, both fees and travel, by a thousand bucks each. And so that really is hard to work with, some of that. Because there'll be two of us going to some of this stuff instead of one. Two registrations instead of one.
It's a non-legislative year, though.
Yeah, and that's why, but that's why I left it at the three thousand, was for travel, was because of how Lexi would be going through some of that stuff. So, but, I just wanted to let you know that.
All right, thank you, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this preliminary resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. And then, uh, hearing part will be next.
It'll be the first thing after your preliminary stuff, or the hearing, chance for you to...
All right, all right. About time you're gone, VSO compensation.
All right, we addressed this for the twenty-twenty-six budget when last we met. Now, the question that's out there is, not only now, there's one of these coming up here this fall, the one that was intended last spring, there's twenty-four, and so on and so forth, which... I hate opening these cans of worms, I, I guess I didn't open it, but...
Hey, there is that.
You're gonna get to close it. And that's how do you want to proceed?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Give your opinion, I don't think we should pay behind this, I think it's coming forward.
She asked us, what, two months ago, I mean, this next meeting?
See, we bring this up last meeting.
That was part of the budget, you talked about it in the budget.
Right, we talked about it in the...
We drafted for twenty-twenty-six, and we granted, I thought substantially twenty-four hundred dollars towards this.
But for twenty-twenty-six, not for twenty-five?
Correct, because that was a budget, that was a budget meeting, so this is...
So can we, can we compensate for the next one coming?
Certainly can. That would be my opinion, since she asked before this next meeting that she asked.
I mean, that's a, that's a trade, she, she, I know she liked all the twenty-five, but it's going back with her future.
Go from here forward, is what you're saying?
What are you saying?
Go from here forward.
Compensate her for the one coming up, twenty-eight, twenty-five.
I, I wouldn't agree to work back.
No, I wouldn't either.
That's the one in the spring.
Wow, or...
No, no, twenty-four she wasn't moving to.
The spring of twenty-five, go from here forward.
Yeah, the one coming.
Yeah.
And then I...
You're in favor of that, right?
Presume you have to establish an amount, and if it was conventionally...
I did do a big amount.
We did.
Well, that's twenty-twenty-six, and I mean...
Yeah, there were two of us, right?
So presumably, by that standard, this would be twelve hundred dollars.
Yes, right.
So, and I guess I, I, I want it stipulated here.
I've never gone to a convention with that spin, it's cost that much.
Um, there's typically, they, they start Sunday afternoon, and...
Four days.
They're done on Thursday afternoon.
But, but to clarify this, Doc, if you not ask money for the convention...
Yes, for what she's losing, maybe.
Right, so, that's what she's asking.
Right.
In that letter she sends us, she talked about that in there, saying that that's what the game is.
Correct. So she's basically giving up four of her workdays, out of regular job, to go to this train on this compensation.
I make a motion that we grant her for this whole...
Grant her.
Convention.
Motion made by Brian, well...
How much?
Twelve hundred. Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred.
In your motion, or second to that?
Second.
Second by Brian Miller, discussion on it?
And I, I, this doesn't necessarily need to be part of the minutes, but I want an understanding here, because you could hear something about this coming up.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, and I'm gonna use this as an example, but it's, it's implausible. I have had employees reach out to me about their time and travel when they go someplace on Sunday. I said, you're not required to be there. Okay, I'll leave for our state convention on Sunday, I'm putting, okay, because I'm not required to go. Apparently she is, so, in order, that's what the letter suggests, that we receive that it will be a state guy, if they're required to attend. So that being said, I want that to be a clearly distinguished element that we're talking about here. You leave and go someplace on Sunday, and you don't have to go, and don't come out again. Somebody will go over and ask you. Get what I'm saying here?
You didn't go on that Sunday.
Well...
Any other day, we...
Also, but they are paid on a workday, right?
Sunday really isn't a workday.
Well, because she's part-time, you know, she can justify...
Probably. So I just, I think, I think you're threading a little bit of a needle here, and that's why I hate these circumstances.
I just think...
This is an extreme example, because I think you guys should start paying me more, because I'm losing three month days of farming during harvest for going to stay with the ocean.
Every other employee would, yeah, just not done.
I'm, I'm, I'm being sarcastic, but I'm kind of bringing up what Dan's open can of worms can entail.
Does the thing start on Sunday?
Yes.
Well, then she's required to go. Well, that's a different case.
And, you know, so, we've done something here, but I, this may not be the last time you hear about this, and I don't want you to be frustrated...
I hope so, but, yeah.
And, and so on, because, not gonna lie to you, not my money, but it does frustrate me.
Well, I, I just don't agree with you, but, well, I guess, any other discussion? Call for vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, nay? I would agree with you.
Did that just happen to us?
You didn't agree with me. Okay.
No.
Whatever, okay, let's move on.
Is it three to two now?
In the future, I get, but this, this year.
And what did you, where'd you go?
No, he voted yes.
Oh, that's all I did, that's all I need, okay.
Well, if it would've been only for twenty-six, it would've been a little different.
Well, it's already in the twenty-six budget.
Yeah, it is, but the twenty-five, we, we add, it costs us an extra twelve hundred bucks.
That's why you disagreed.
Right.
Okay, all right, let's go back to the budget. There really is not a whole lot, uh, to be reviewed here, other than, you know, you are going to approve this as the preliminary budget today. We'll, we'll touch on this in September, probably not a whole lot. And then, of course, we'll have our public hearing on our October meeting, October, I believe, at seven, which is the final day, so we better not have a postponed that day, that's all. But I addressed each of the areas that you, that we went through when we met on the twenty-ninth of July. That includes the VSO position, that includes, uh, a couple of the departments, Sheriff's Department in particular...